I would like to call the August 9th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. It is, let's see, a few minutes after four. And a quick notice that the commission may vote to go into executive session at any time which would not be open to the public. That would be for legal advice, discussion with the city attorneys on any item on the agenda. May we have the roll call, please?
Marie Jones.
Here.
Present.
Carol Mandino.
Present.
Ian Sharp.
Present.
Marshall Camp. Excused. Mary Norton.
Present.
Dr. Ricardo Guthrie. Excused.
Next, at this time, any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within our jurisdiction that's not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion. Is there anybody in the, who has a public comment either online or in the audience? I do not see any. Oh, yes. Thank you. If you could, please give your, your name and address so we have that for the record.
Kathy Kuzma, 2535 North Dove's Nest Lane. I guess I have a question. Do you guys still do tree resources? And then, like, the item that's coming up to bid right now, it, that used to be saved for tree resources and strain, storm drainage, but it doesn't look like that's the case anymore? And protected resources, it looks like people are building on protected resource areas. And you now do ADUs before you do the building of the house? And you go ahead and occupy residencies before they actually are approved to be residents? And I guess I'm noticing that you can do a permit online and nobody really checks to see whether or not there's a valid storm plan in place for safe water. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So-
Gotcha. I guess the other thing on this one that's coming up to bid, the APN, isn't even a valid APN. Okay.
Are you talking about for the case that we're hearing today?
Yep.
Okay, if you would like to, that would be then an item that's on our agenda. So if you want to, at the, stay for the public comment for that, you can, you could also bring that up then, or as Alex says, you could, she can contact you and talk to you about all of those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? No? So next, we need the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes or any discussion on those? So a motion to approve?
I've moved to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you. A second? I will second that. And any, any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that move, that is approved.
And Marie?
Yes.
After this meeting, I'll get a paper copy for you to sign off on those minutes.
Okay, I'll make sure I check it.
Thank you.
All right, so now we have the public hearing and our first item is a direct-to-ordinate zoning map amendment from Vintage Partners and Live Communities. So, Alex, you're presenting?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Hi. Alexandra Puccarelli, current planning manager. I'm going to do a really quick, hopefully, presentation on this project. And, let's go. So the request overview, this is, we have two requests before that, before us. I'm gonna kind of mush them together into one presentation, but we'll do separate votes on each item. So this is a request to annex approximately 1.8 acres located at the corner of Woody Mountain Road. Can we get my presentation up there? All right, I'm just gonna move around a little bit here, it'll be fun. All right, so we have an annexation, corner of Woody Mountain and West 66 includes half of the right-of-way on Woody Mountain. And concurrently, we have a request for a direct-to-ordinate zoning map amendment to rezone slightly over 13 acres. It's currently rural residential with the resource protection overlay. This request would rezone it to high-density residential, still with the resource protection overlay. So vicinity map, you can see here that we have the project site is the overall, thank you, overall parcel. And then highlighted in red, I'm showing the annexation part. So it's just that corner of the parcel is still in the county. Sort of surrounding us in this area, we have the Public Works Yard to the north, as well as some more county parcels. There's a river outfitter across the street. To the east is the Woody Mountain Campground and to this kind of southeast is where the Presidio is. Directly south adjacent to this is Sky Cottages. And then to the west, we have Timber Sky. Adjacent zoning, so this area has somewhat recently seen a lot of rezoning to high-density, medium-density residential. And then we have, some of the zoning you may not recognize is because it's county zoning, that sort of G, general, the commercial, things like that. Here we have the proposed site plan. Again, we talked about rezoning from RR to HR. The development being proposed is multifamily residential. It includes surface parking, as well as some garage spaces, as well as site amenities, includes a clubhouse, a fitness building, and a bunch of outdoor improvements. As far as density, the zoning code policy HR allows between, a minimum of 10 and a maximum of 29 units per acre in the resource protection overlay when in a urban activity center. That would equate to, for this parcel, about 130 to 377 units max. The regional plan, because this is an urban activity center, the regional plan calls for a minimum density of 13 units an acre. This project is proposing 214 units. That results in a density of about 16.45 units an acre, which puts us over that requirement of the regional plan to be more than 13. Here, I'm showing the proposed mix of units. So very sort of traditional multifamily mixes, one bedroom, one bath. There are some two bedrooms, sharing a bath, two-bedroom, two-bath, and then the most bedrooms we're seeing is this three-bedroom, two-bath. The application for site plan was approved on June 30th, 2023, but subject to them getting this direct-to-ordinate zoning map amendment, and I guess also the, the annexation, so. I just threw up some floor plans, just so we can kind of get familiar with what they're proposing. You have the first floor plan on the bottom, then second and third above. So this is a three-story building. I highlighted those three-story buildings in red, so they're building forward, pushed up towards the, the two roads adjacent. And then there's kind of four interior buildings. This is the beautiful Flagstaff-style elevation. So here's building type two. This is also a three-story building. It only has 12 units. It's basically, it looks to me, at least, like they took the ends and kind of squished it together. So we just have one of these. There's the elevation of this building. And here are some of the materials being proposed. So the fiber cement lap siding, some hardy board kind of thing. Let's see, stone veneer, asphalt shingle roof. They have some roofs that have that metal roof, sort of as an accent at, at entry points, mostly. Painted metal railing on the porches. And here's building type three. This building type has garages on the bottom and then walk up and there's two units on the top. These are all, there's five of these buildings are all located on that west property edge. There are additional garage buildings along the south, but those don't have units in them, they're just garage spaces. Here's what that looks like. Resource protection, so this site, there was a fire that moved through this area years ago. There's not a lot of trees on this site. There are a few along the southern property edge and then some kind of along the east side. And actually, quite a few of them are in the Woody Mountain right-of-way. This site is required to maintain at least 50% of the tree canopy and they do so. And you can see those green trees just a teeny bit on the south and the east there. So the annexation request, so that's the project in a big overview nutshell kind of view. The annexation request is, I consider this first because we need to annex that land in order to then rezone it. So let's talk about the annexation. As I said, 1.82 acres, right on the corner. It's mostly on the parcel, but we are annexing some of that right-of-way. We have three required findings for an annexation. You have to meet Arizona State statute. You have to meet the relative sections of the City of Flagstaff Regional Plan. And then you, you have to show that you're in compliance as far as public facilities and services impact. So the first part is the conformance with state statute. The state sets eligibility for properties to annex. This property has met all those requirements. That has to do with like adjacency and how big the parcel is. So we're meeting that. It identifies a required process, which we're following. And it sets requirements for zoning classification for annexation. So when you annex, annex property into the city, we have to find the, the most equal zoning. So this would probably come in as rural residential, but then, and then we're making the request to rezone it to the high-density residential. Finding two is that it has to be in conformance with the regional plan. We're looking to make sure that is not detrimental to the majority of people in the surrounding area or the community in general. We want to demonstrate a favorable benefit to the taxpayers of the city. There are two policies we tend to look at and they have to do with city services. So this property is within the urban growth boundary, which means that we can service it with water and sewer. Then we look at conformance with the city code division as far as public systems analysis. That requires a traffic analysis, the water sewer impact analysis, a stormwater analysis, and we also look at schools and fire protection. Did I go to? No, okay. All right, so a traffic analysis was done dated June 9th. It was accepted by city staff and I believe approved by ADOT? Approved by ADOT? Because that Route 66 along there is actually under ADOT jurisdiction. The city has Woody Mountain, at least for maintenance. There are a number of tra, of traffic improvements that are needed off-site, extending turn lanes, continuing a median, creating a turn lane. When you're going eastbound on 66, there'll be a right-hand turn lane onto Woody Mountain. Left and right-hand turns at the main driveway of the, of the development. And then making a proportional contribution towards a future signal at Woody Mountain and 66. The water sewer impact analysis was done a while ago, December 20th, 2013. The city issued a waiver for that, for, for a new one and allowed them to base it off of the old one. My current understanding is that they will be required to do a 12-inch sewer main that is off-site. It's interesting because this development is happening kind of in concert with a lot of other construction development in the area. So my understanding is that Sky Cottages, which also got rezoned, rezoned, yes, that they, part of their commitment was to put in this sewer line. And so ideally, this will be done. If it's not done, then they have to do it. So that's also included. Stormwater analysis was done August 30th, 2022. There were no off-site stormwater improvements needed. They're handling it all onsite. They have underground detention and water quality requirements. There we go. Schools, we don't anticipate this project impacting the local school district. And this, this site is served by Fire Station Number One, which is located to the east on Thompson Drive, and it's within the desired response time, so that's good. So staff's recommendation, staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission, in accordance with the required findings, forward the annexation request to the city council with a recommendation for approval. We can come back to this, put a pin on this, and I'll continue on and talk about the rezone if that's, works for you. Okay. So, the zoning map amendment. Required findings for a zoning map amendment is conformance with the general plan, community benefits and public good, and that the site is physically suitable. So finding number one, conformance with the general plan. This area is a future urban area type and it's also a neighborhood urban activity center. It's in the urban growth boundary. We looked at certain policies in the general plan and some highlights that I've picked out here is they're proposing an electric-only development, so they won't be running national, natural gas to the site. They have very stringent outdoor lighting standards. They'll also be constructing the foots and continuing the foots that was constructed as part of Timber Sky, continuing that east along 66, as well as down Woody Mountain Road. As well as providing us 214 much-needed rental units. There is a lack of commercial development at this location, but if you think about it, in this area, we really don't have the amount, the density and the amount of residential units to support commercial at this time. So by adding residential in this area, perhaps one day we can support some commercial. There are commercial zoned areas as part of Timber Sky. I think that's phase four. So perhaps in the future, we'll see that. There also is, there are some concerns about a lack of connectivity in urban activity centers. The general plan really wants to see connections between sites and a sort, a more grid-like block dimensions of, I think it's like 300 by 300 feet. We're not meeting that with this development. Staff has come up with condition number two, which gives three options. That staff would be happy if one of those options could be met by the developer. Finding number two, community benefits and public goods. As I said before, 214 residential units, electric-only development, the foots connection. They're also providing this civic space right on the corner as a real amenity to the public. And then as far as the site is physically suitable, the site meets the applicable codes and requirements and is required to mitigate any impacts as determined by those impact analyses. We have a development agreement. I don't have a draft to share with you at this point. I called out some of those bullet points in the staff report, but we're still working on some of the details of that, that agreement. But it includes the construction of off-site sewer improvements, the construction of those roadway improvements, a proportional share of the cost of that traffic signal. I think we're still working on getting the exact dollar amount agreed to. Yeah? Okay. We're getting closer every minute. Materials management, as well as the electric-only development. For citizen participation, the applicant held two neighborhood meetings. One in early December of '22, the next one, we kind of waited for the holidays to pass, then had a second one in February. 18 people attended the first one, four individuals attended the second one. There is that report that was part of one of the attachments that talked about common questions and concerns. So staff's recommendation for the rezone. Staff recommends the commission, in accordance with the findings presented, forward the direct-to-ordinate zoning map amendment request to city council with a recommendation of approval, subject to the following conditions. It must be developed in accordance with the site plan, barring modifications. This is that condition number two, that the site plan be amended to include one of the following. Removal of the gates shown near the driveway of, of the development, or establishing a vehicle connection to Sky Cottages to the south, or adding some sort of internal driveway circulation that would go through the center of the site where they have their amenity space currently. Our other conditions, fairly typical, they have to meet the zoning code, other city codes, ordinances, and regulations. They have to be in conformance with the development agreement. And if, then we have this, this last condition that if it gets rezoned but doesn't get developed within two years, that, that staff or council can take action to basically revert it back to its old zoning. So that's all I have. I know the applicant is here. So I'll let, do you have any questions for me or staff really quick, or you can come back and ask me questions or?
Anyone on the commission have a question? I have a question if you don't. I, I'd like to understand better, Alex, the staff's kind of design rationale for the idea of removing the gates or establishing, I mean, what, what's, can you say a little bit more about it? I understand that it's about connectivity and, I mean, it, this is not like a urban grid. So how did you kind of see that and how did you come to that conclusion?
That is coming from, in the regional plan, we have a characteristics table that talks about what we want to see in certain area types. And this urban activity center, you know, I talked about, you have, if you're residential only, you need to have at least 13 units an acre. So one of the other things as touched upon on that table is talking about block sizes and wanting to have these smaller block sizes that increases connection in those areas. It makes it more, more likely for people to walk from one place to another if they're not walking down like a giant long block, to walk down another giant long block and then come back around kind of thing, that if it's smaller and they can get more direct routes. So that is the, the thinking behind these requirements, is to try and break up the mass of, instead of this larger perceived block, to have some sort of connection that would be open to the public, that would connect this development closer to that, that requirement of the regional plan.
Okay, thank you. The reason I'm asking this is, it's, it's less having to do with this project and more having to do with how the city thinks about projects like this where it's not like a block system. I mean, it, in some ways, it seems like, you know, when you're talking about 300-foot blocks and so forth, you're really talking about sort of established kind of urban areas, you know, rather, as opposed to places like this, where, you know, it's, doesn't have that kind of structure. And, I mean, I can, I can understand what you're talking about, like removing the gates. That's just, is, is, like, removing the gates is just the idea that people can move through there.
Correct.
That's, that would be the only reason. Otherwise, they wouldn't, that would just be off limits.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Mary.
I have a bit of a follow-up on that, same sort of subject. So I thought it was somewhat of the policy of the city to not allow gated communities such as that.
I believe historically, we've had clearer policies about gated communities specifically. Right now, it's more, our policies are more addressing connectivity. And so that's, that's how we end up with, we, we generally don't support gated communities because we want that connectivity- that connectivity between neighborhoods and adjacent neighbors kind of thing, so.
Okay, thanks. I mean, that, that has been my experience in looking at gated communities and, and that, that sort of topic. And, you know, that is the beauty of a master plan community. There is that interconnectivity between blocks, and I mean, like, development blocks, not blocks of neighborhoods. So, you know, I would, would have been in favor of needing to meet two of those, at least remove the gates and create some connectivity either to Sky Cottages or whatever the development is going to be behind it. I mean, they're going to be closed off from that as well. So, you know, I think those are reasonable requests, and I'd like to see, at least, I'd like to see the first two.
And I think, I know that the applicant has some opinions about that condition, so I'm sure Lindsay will, will also share some information about that.
Okay, does the commission have, commissioners have any other questions for the staff? Bob?
Yeah, Alex, I was wondering if you could speak to the history of the annexation and rezoning of this particular area. Just trying to understand why we would want to be annexing this property into the city.
I think, you know, it's, when I look at, at, when, okay. Some of the things you say, like, why would we want to? That's not how I tend to approach my job. It's not really what I want or what the city wants. It's about, it's about code and the requirements and the state statute. I think it makes sense that this area is within the urban growth boundaries. That implies that in the future, additional property in this area could be annexed in the city. It provides those property owners with city services, most importantly, water and sewer, which we really want to get people within the city on a public water and sewer, as opposed to wells and septic systems, not ideal. So, because, you know, because this weird little corner is part of the parcel that we're looking to develop on, it makes sense to annex it into the city and have it be consistent, that the whole property would be within city limits and have, have those services. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I guess I was also just wondering the history of that.
Like, why it's such a weird shape and part of the parcel?
Yeah, like, the properties all around it, have they all been annexed already? If you could go to, back to your map, I don't know.
There have been semi, here, this will be easier, and we won't get quite as carsick. Like, the, the Public Works Yard was recently annexed. I think was portions of Timber Sky annexed? All Timber Sky was?
The whole.
The whole thing. So, this whole area has slowly been incorporated into the city. We have this sort of weird little dangling piece that's still in the county that I could see eventually becoming annexed, so.
So, back to that previous slide there. Everything in that slide minus the area indicated in G is actually been annexed or is part of the city now?
Can you, I don't think you could see. So, this, so G that's in that red is in the, oh, yes. As well as that CG 10,000, and then this blue PC area, and then that G, and it wraps up and around the Public Works Yard. That is counting.
So, the, the little piece that we're talking about now would just be incorporated into everything else that's already been annexed and is part of the city?
Yes.
Got it.
So, everything in like, yellow, orange, the purple at the end, that's all city?
So, not to belabor it, but that, I guess the rest of the RR on here was at one time in the county, and it got annexed, but for some reason, this one little corner was not. Is that really what happened?
Probably, yes.
So, my other question is regarding the traffic light. What are the plans for that? Is there a timeframe? What's the trigger for that actually happening?
So, I have Reed Miller here from Traffic Engineering, who can jump in if I start butchering what I'm saying. Part of it is that Route 66 is under ADOT jurisdiction. So, we, we've done a traffic, we've done a traffic analysis that talked about when a traffic signal will be required. I believe it's not for a couple of years. So, this, this development wasn't, didn't tip the scale into saying, okay, now, but it, there are plans for a future traffic signal at that location. Do you have an idea of years? I thought it was two.
It would depend on how things develop in Timber Sky and Sky Cottages and all of that, the traffic increases.
Yep. Probably.
So, so that's a pretty dangerous intersection, has been for quite a few years with all that development. Is there any reason that this isn't pushing that to do that?
So, and absolutely, I think, I think, reading the report of those neighborhood meetings, that was a common comment from people who lived there, was, gosh, we'd really like to have the traffic light. Sky Cottages, my understanding is that they agreed to, they were like, if it's warranted, we'll put it in, absolutely, and pay for it. So, the problem is, is that until, until the numbers show it's warranted, ADOT will not let you install that traffic light. So, we have, yeah. I guess you could drive like, back and forth through it and run those numbers up, Bob, but until then.
Just curiosity-wise, with the city doing roundabouts at so many other locations, why, why do a traffic light instead of a roundabout?
A roundabout was also, there was a moment in time where a roundabout was looked at as an option, and it was, I believe it was decided no by ADOT, that they were not interested in doing a roundabout.
So, I, obviously, there must have been a traffic impact analysis for Sky Cottages, and now there is one here. Did they piggyback on each other, using the same data? I mean, or are they all individual?
Yes, it's a cumulative thing, so each one has to take into account the build-out that has happened or will happen before them.
So, so this one took into account?
Yes.
The traffic that will be created by Sky Cottages?
As well as the traffic of Timber Sky. It's, yes, it's a very holistic.
Even though it's not developed, it still took into account all those numbers?
It looks at it on like, a yearly, it'll, it'll say, you know, what are conditions now? What will they be at this year, at this year, and kind of look at that progression?
Okay, because that, it seems so backward, frankly, you know, to get to the point where you have all this traffic, and then you finally get a, a signal. And when I read the comments of the neighborhood or the community meetings, it sounded like those people were satisfied that there was, there was going to be a signal, which I interpreted as that it was coming along with this development, until I got deeper into this and I realized, okay, it's not. And did those residents understand that the traffic signal is not coming until after this is built out, as well as Sky Cottages?
I think Lindsay will speak to that.
I, I, you know, there was one thing, and I, this, I may be the only person who, who needs this or would like it, but you guys can let me know. I've emailed you about just the idea of, could we, it's really helpful on a case like this. I know we, we, several of us were here for, for Sky Cottages, but it's, it's nice to kind of have a perspective on the whole master plan and see sort of the status of things. So, I don't know if that's something you would be prepared to give an overview of, or the applicant?
Yes, I coordinated that with Lindsay, so that'll be part of her presentation. I thought it best to let the applicant, because they know best what's happening right now and kind of current status in Timber Sky, so.
Thank you for that. All right. So, Lindsay, is it you?
Okay. Can I put my flash drive in your computer? Could we take a small break and then return back to your presentation? Would that be all right with the commission? All right. We're going to rejoin from our break now. Chairperson Jones? Oh, it's kind of loud.
Oh.
Hey, hello.
Let's go forward.
Okay. Chairperson Jones, commissioners, thank you so much. For your record, my name is Lindsay Shuby. I'm with the law firm of Gamage and Burnham, 40 North Central in Phoenix. And thank you so much. I think most of us know each other, and, and we are here in front of Sky Cottages, and I'm really excited to present this development to you. I hadn't seen Alex's presentation. You talk about teamwork. I want to thank staff, every discipline. From our folks in engineering, Reed is so sick of hearing from me about traffic, our friends in planning, down to working the computer this evening, this has been a true team effort. You, you've got fabulous staff here, and we've worked very closely together on this project. So, before I start, I think, Chair and Commissioners, we answered the question on annexation, right? The whole request is 13 acres. It's just the 1.8 in the corner that's a remnant annexation request. And as for the traffic light, Chair and Commissioners, you know, we're going to hear from Walter in a minute, from Vintage, but he's been trying to pay for that traffic light for five years. So, we would like to install it. We're going to put a contribution. We did, if you recall during Sky Cottages, asked to install the traffic signal, still wasn't warranted. You would have seen us months ago if it wasn't for our friends at ADOT and fighting for this traffic signal. And as for the roundabout versus traffic signal, the infrastructure's in the ground. They actually have all the conduit and the infrastructure for a traffic signal there. So, we're close. We're going to be ready to put it in as soon as it's warranted. We've been fighting for it, but there we go. So, development team, Lindsay Shuby and Nick Sabraski with Gamage and Burnham, Vintage Partners, Walter is here, you'll hear from him later. As you can tell by the name, Live at Timber Sky. We have a partner in this, Live Communities. I am going to get Heidi to come up and introduce herself and tell you about Live. They're not new to Arizona, but they're new to Flagstaff, and they will be the building partner. They'll actually close on this property after the rezone is, is complete. The engineering team, Stephen, and I should have put Kayla on there with SWI. Our design team, Todd and Associates, and Norris Design, Scott is our architect. He is on teams if we have any questions for him. I'll talk about the architecture a little bit more, but I loved Alex's presentation. You can tell she's an architect, and I'm not, speaking about all the materials in a more detailed fashion. And Doug with Norris Design did our landscape plan. So, if I can, I'm going to switch it over to Live, just because they're new to this community and would like them to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Lindsay, and thank you guys for, for letting us come and talk to you today. So, you obviously know our, our partner, Vintage, and Walter, and we're very thankful for him bringing us into this project. We're excited. As Lindsay mentioned, we're not new to Arizona, but we're new to the city of Flagstaff. And so, a little bit about Live. We've been, we're a full-service real estate organization, so we do everything from development through, we own our assets long-term and we manage them ourselves, so we're in-house operations as well. And we think that speaks volumes because we're deeply invested in the projects that we do, and we, we are very heavily involved, obviously, from beginning until, you know, it could be 20 years. So, our plan here is long-term as well. We have, we've been doing this for 30 years, and we've got, we've developed a total of 11 Live-branded communities so far. So, the Live brand is, has been around for about a decade, and we started down in the Phoenix area with our first Live development. We've also done some Live Generation Senior Living. So, the brand itself has gained quite a lot of traction, has an excellent reputation here in Arizona. So, as, as you can see on the map here, this shows you sort of all the locations in the valley, and then we have our, our Flagstaff off to the side here, but a big presence and just a really big experience down there. And so, we look, the way that, that we look at ourselves, our brand is, is built much different than a typical multifamily operator. So, we, our mission, in fact, kind of mirrors yours, as our, our mission and our purpose is to help people live fuller lives. And so, we know that yours is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all, and we love that, because that's, that's kind of who we are as well. So, we're very involved with our residents and with our communities that we operate in. We feel like we bring in a difference in operations because we're actually, we build relationships with our customers, we build relationships with our teams, we do work in the community. We're excited for the opportunity to do work in the Flagstaff community and to actually raise the bar in our programming. And that programming is, revolves around our three-brand tenants, and that is live responsibly, live well, and live connected. And we think that really just complements what you guys do in Flagstaff, so we're excited to bring it here. I'm a fourth-generation native to Arizona, so very much invested in the state, love the state, love the city, and we're excited for the opportunity. So, hopefully, you'll be able to ask any questions that you have of us and, of course, our partner. And turn it back over to Lindsay. Thank you.
And as you can see on, on that previous exhibit, they also are going to be the developer of Sky Cottages. And so, connectivity is very important to us, and we'll, we'll get to that, we'll get to that in terms of stipulation. So, again, aerial map, and Alex spoke a bit about this. We've got the Public Works Yard to our north. The balance of Timber Sky, Walter is going to get up and talk about that just in a few minutes. But, as you can see, you know, Timber Sky is, is, we're building out. We've got single-family homes. We've got Roars, which is a Lytec project on, on Block 1, our donation to Habitat for Humanity for, for starter homes in the north part of Block 2. Sky Cottages at Timber Sky, if you recall, is a single-family for rent. And then, Live at Timber Sky, which is going to kind of round out the development in this area. And I do like to say, this is the ultimate diversity of housing types. We've got everything right here. So, this is a market-rate rental project that we are proposing at this corner. So, as Alex did a fabulous job, we've got an annexation, 1.815 acres, so it's just the, the real corner. And then, the zoning map amendment is for 13.01 acres, again, from rural residential with that RPO, the, the resource protection overlay, to high-density residential. Again, we do keep that rural, or the resource protection overlay. So, we have 214 units and about 16 and a half units an acre. As Alex described, we not only have the HR, that has to be a minimum of 10, but because we're in an urban activity center, we've got a minimum of 13. So, part of our goal was to ensure that we are compatible with our surroundings, you know, to offer, again, diversity of housing types, while making sure that our friends in Presidio, the balance of the neighbors in, in Timber Sky, that, that it's all compatible in terms of height, density, all of those things. As stated, we, we're in the urban activity center. We do submit to you that we are in conformance and that the regional plan does support this development at this corner. The regional plan supports increased density, minimum of 13, like I said, for it about 16 and a half units an acre, walkability, public space, and the preservation of resources. So, we are incorporating native drought, drought-tolerant landscaping, and we do have monarch, monarch-friendly landscaping as well. Pollinator-friendly landscaping, that was my favorite from Sky Cottages, too. So, here is the site plan, and Alex took you through it in great detail. Again, it's a combination of two-to-three-story units, centrally-located resident, or amenity space, I'm going to take you through that. Landscape publics, there's, there are multiple civic spaces, not only at the corner, but also in our entryway. We've got, so, three civic spaces and an extensive pedestrian network. So, connectivity is very, very important to us. As Alex mentioned, there's the extension of the Foots Trail, not only coming up south from Sky Cottages, but also headed into Block 1 of, of Timber Sky, and as well, it's dark sky compliant. Here is, here's rendering. It's interesting, when we were working on a project years ago with Mark Sawyer, so I think a lot of you remember, I was on a call with, with Brian Kalina and Mark Sawyer's, and we had an architect from out of state, and they said, make it look Flagstaff. Well, what does that mean? You know, what, make it look Flagstaff? Give us a little bit more in terms of building materials, and it was my first project in the jurisdiction. When I look at this, I think Todd and Associates did a really lovely job. This, to me, looks Flagstaff. I think it's contextually appropriate. I think the materials, the different roof materials. What's interesting, this is our entryway off of Woody Mountain. There are civic spaces on both the north and the south side of our entry. There are civic spaces on both the north and the south side of our entry. And then you walk right into the leasing office. Here is a view from the, this is the locating Route 66, and this is our secondary access point. I point this out in part because there is a gate here. The reason why we have a gate at this location is because ADOT does not want this to be used as an entry point. So we shake our heads, but this is used for an emergency access only. And we have it there for fire, but we would like to keep that gate if possible because we don't want cut-through traffic and people coming off of Route 66. But I really do think, I think this is, you know, authentic Flagstaff. I think it's contextually appropriate and I think it's really going to match what we have in the rest, in the balance of Timber Sky. Here's another image. Again, this is looking at some of our amenity space and then the buildings. And then here, this is from the corner. So if you look in, in the corner, this is our biggest civic space. Again, we've got a ton of landscaping, hardscape and passive. This is where the Footstool will connect from the south and then headed west. And yeah, really proud of the architecture. Todd and Associates is on if you want, if you have more questions to do with the architecture. But I really do think, you know, the landscape plan is produced by Norris Design and the architecture really does speak for itself and really does, you know, demonstrate Flagstaff.
So do you anticipate planting all those trees that we see there?
Yes, this is demonstrative of the approved landscape plan. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so the amenities, holy heck. This is an amenitized development. We're really excited. We have a 6,500-square-foot clubhouse, a 3,700-foot fitness center, four different bike parking areas, as well as bicycle repair. Councilman Shumoni isn't here, but if you would, I'd tell him, we've got bike repair in there. He always likes that. We've got the Footstool with the connectivity going all the way around. We do have a connection, and I'll show that to you next, a bicycle and pedestrian connection between Sky Cottages. As mentioned, Live is going to own and operate both. If you recall, in Sky Cottages, our amenities were different. They were a little more mature. We had that amphitheater. It's a different amenity package than we have here. The intention is to offer residents access to both amenities, amenities in both projects. We have a dog park and a dog spa. Yes, I just said that out loud. We have a play area. We have a flex lawn, not to be confused with the additional yoga and fitness lawn, as well as a fire pit and a garden. So, you know, the amenities are amazing and we're really excited to bring that to market. We do, if you recall, Sky Cottages, we spoke a lot about vehicular connectivity between Sky Cottages and this corner piece. At that time, we didn't know what was happening at the corner. We've gone back and forth. At one point, we did have an iteration of plans, if you look through, that shows vehicular connectivity between these two residential developments. I submit to you, vehicular connectivity is not the answer. There is pedestrian and there is cycling connectivity. This is not a fenced community. We encourage and look forward to residents on these two communities interacting. What we don't want is the interaction of vehicles. With this great amenity package that we have here, we want our residents to walk back and forth. We want Live at Sky Cottage, Live at Sky Cottages, Live at Timber Sky residents to go down to Sky Cottages and enjoy things that are happening in the amphitheater. We don't want cars to go through. So we're going to get to that in a second, but we do have a really nice, Norris did a nice job of kind of some hardscaped pedestrian connectivity area to connect Sky Cottages because connectivity is very important to us. Traffic control, we spoke about this. We did work closely with the neighborhood. We did tell the neighborhood in both neighborhood meetings that we would like a light, but it's beyond our control. So ADOT said no. Again, we've got the infrastructure in place to have a light as soon as it's warranted and we are making a proactive contribution. Sky Cottages made a contribution. Public Works made a contribution. So as soon as ADOT warrants it, we look forward to putting that light in there. Sustainability. I actually listened. I listened to some of your hearings. I listened to some of the fun, more controversial ones, too. I think I need a life because I sit and I listen to cases that aren't mine. But I know sustainability, the carbon neutrality plan is very, very important to you as a commission, Chair and Commissioners, as well as to this community. I am really proud to say, you know, we're building off of what we did in Sky Cottages. We are incorporating and supporting, what's happening? Oh, okay. Well, I'll talk about sustainability. We don't need a picture for this. Incorporate and supporting recycling onsite. We have all electric units and appliances. We have two EV, if you remember in Sky Cottages, we've got that relationship with Envoy. We'll have the same in both, where residents can rent an electric vehicle for use. If you only, so if you don't want a car, you just want to use it for an hour, two, we're going to have two electric vehicles at by minimum onsite for residents to use. Nine dual-port EV charging stations, so that means eighteen, far above what the code requires. Bike parking again in four locations, pollinator-friendly landscaping. Three electric bikes for use by the residents. Again, that'll be the same contract between Sky Cottages and Live at Timber Sky. And then a lighting plan, you know, Sky Cottages and Timber Sky did set a high bar for it to be responsible in terms of lighting and protecting your dark skies. We will follow the exact same lead here. So, you know, it's really important to us. I think that the commitment to all-electric is really important and we're happy to bring that. And then the response to the, to the housing crisis. You know, if I hear two things, it's the carbon neutrality and the housing crisis. There's no question that you have a, you don't have enough units. So we really are excited to bring two hundred and fourteen market-rate units to the market here in Flagstaff. I'd like to pass it over to Walter at Vintage Partners. He'll give his name and address for the record. And Chairperson Jones to speak to kind of what's happening with the balance of Timber Sky and where we're at. And then I've got one last thing to talk about after Walter comes up. Walter?
Chairperson Jones and Commission members, thank you. Walter Crutchfield, Vintage Partners, 2502 East Camelback. I'm excited to talk about this. I'm at a point in my career and in delivering in Flagstaff where if we're going to say affordable housing is an emergency, then we have to act like it's an emergency. I was just on a trip where I was talking to affordable housing providers in a different state. And it appears as though there's lots of theoretical conversations, but not lots of actual delivery. Before I do this, I want to say two things, and I want to be on the record again. If there was a warrant to build a light, we would pay for the light today. With the conduit, it's been in the ground for four years. I have taken ADOT to the intersection and said, "I know your math doesn't warrant it, but how about near collisions?" So we stood there and we watched for quite some time. So I just want to say that publicly again. We understand and we feel the same way. And I think the neighbors understand. We feel the same way. We all want a light. And again, we would put up all the dollars, not just our proportionate share, to get it in today. We also own the Woody Mountain RV Park. And so we see the problems related to traffic there and wish that we could change it, but apparently there's math. So it's beyond me. I also want to say this, in this, I'm going to explain the different entities that are building here. A developer creates a master plan, creates a vision, and then goes and finds people who will line up with that vision. We're proud of Timber Sky. We're proud of what's there. I'm the president of the HOA and it's actually a pleasant job, with the exception of one person. It is a pleasant job because we have a great relationship and people love living there and we love what was developed. We went to find a multifamily partner and we've tried for almost ten years to get Live to partner with us in Flagstaff because we've seen the quality. Years ago, I just went to one of their projects and walked around and talked to people. Because I think that's how you find out. People are going to tell you and they have brochures and websites. Ask the lady that's got her dog in the dog park, what does she think? And people were just effusive about Live. And so we're excited to have Live. We know the quality of what they'll bring. And we felt that was important at Sky Cottages because we think we were ahead of our time in what we envisioned and what we developed, but we did all that design without the operating partner. We needed somebody who was going to operate it the way you heard Heidi describe their vision. And so we're excited that they're going to be operating both. If you look at the master planner, the thirty-thousand-foot view here, you see a number of things. You see Roars, which is a company out of Minneapolis that we recruited to do low-income tax credit housing. That's sixty percent AMI rental. Our agreement with the city required, I think, a hundred and eighty or a hundred and ninety. They're delivering two hundred and twenty-one units. They are right at the doorstep, ready to go. Just adjacent to that, we have forty, probably more, we're not totally finished with the plan there, that are starter homes, six hundred square-foot starter homes with Habitat for Humanity, which I'm sure you're aware of. They administrate that process. They have seven hundred people on a waiting list for forty homes, which I think demonstrates the demand that's there. Our hope is that by locating low-income tax credit housing and Habitat in the middle of a master plan community, that I can look over and see 1.7 million-dollar houses, we can begin to say to people, "These types of housing are compatible." A real neighborhood has everyone, which means it doesn't have gates. So you kind of have us on that one, since I've publicly said over and over and over, we don't put gates up. So I guess I'm on the record again. In this case, we went and got Roars. We've seen their, their projects. They have three in Maricopa County that they're building now. A lot of the affordable housing stuff that's getting built is slap it up fifteen years. That's not these guys. This is a thirty-year project. And the quality of what they deliver, we're excited about. Obviously, we're excited about Habitat. It should be very exciting to you all as planning commissioners that these are being built inside of a master plan because that's historic. We don't put affordable housing in master plans. We put it where nobody can see it because nobody wants it. We put it front and center. It's at our entrance. So we're excited about that. We did twenty affordable units inside of Sky Cottages. And the corner is market rate. We feel like the whole offering is way over and above in terms of affordability. But in order for it to hit a true development, we need all levels. So we have starter homes, we have low-income tax credit, we have affordable units, and Live is a higher-end product. But we want there to be that process of people moving up. It's the same thing we want in single-family where you start at smaller units and people can decide to stay in the neighborhood and just continue to move in bigger units as their family grows. That's the idea here, to represent all types of asset classes. That's our affordable plan and we're excited to bring it to you. So thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Commissioners?
I was just curious what the ownership share would be between Vintage and Live after completion? Will you retain some ownership or not?
For Sky Cottages and the corner, there's a small carried interest, but it's a Live project. Our commitment was to take them through the process. And we're also partnering with them on some projects in Maricopa County. And we anticipate partnering with them on a number of other things in the future.
Okay, I have a question, a couple of questions. On the, let's see, first of all, it's not this project, but the Roars. Do you know what kind of a, what that's going to be? Is that going to be an apartment-style thing probably?
It's a rental project. When we originally did community land trust out here, what we found was it didn't matter if we gave the lots to the builders. The builders were not able to deliver something that was under a half a million dollars, which meant it was no longer affordable. So we had to take that original plan of a hundred community land trust units and transform it into what you see here, which is the Habitat Starter Homes and Roars. So Roars is two hundred and twenty-one mix, similar mix to Live, but it's sixty percent AMI. So the rents are drastically lower than Live is.
So the profile of those buildings is probably going to be sort of similar to Live?
Yes.
In terms of height?
It was important to us, because we have a design standard in Timber Sky. It was important to us that we weren't delivering something that looked like it was affordable. And then people, because we just have to stop doing that. We have to start delivering quality stuff.
Yeah.
And making it part of a master plan.
Yeah, there's no reason it can't be well-designed.
Yep.
Is it also three-story buildings?
I think it's a mix. Is that? I believe it's a mix of two and three-story buildings.
So similar in intensity as what you're doing?
Correct. But the goal there was, how many units can we get? You know, the commitment was a hundred and eighty. They got to two hundred and twenty-one and we were thrilled about that. I do want to say this, too, on density. This was an urban density hub. So we're at the low end of that, but in talking with the neighborhoods, the neighborhoods were not interested in high-end densities. They were okay with this. And it was important, it's always important to us to get, sign off, they're our neighbors. And we felt, I think you could read the comments, we felt like they felt good about that.
I understand that the gate needed on sixty-six to prevent that people from using the emergency access. But it sounds like maybe you're willing to lose the gate at the main entrance?
Well, I'll turn that back over to my attorney, since they're all going to kill me for saying that. But I've said it publicly, and I think it would be hypocritical for me to have said it publicly many times, standing before you, and not say it today. That's kind of the problem with the public record.
I appreciate your honesty.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Chairperson Jones, Commission, we're just about done. I'm really excited. I think this is a great project. I think everything that we brought forward in terms of sustainability, architecture, amenity package are great. This is actually the first time we brought a project, especially with Alex at the helm, who's an architect, where we didn't get comments on the architecture. She just liked it and liked everything. So we're super excited. I think our only issue here is stipulation two. And I do understand that this is a community that doesn't like, you know, gated-in communities. It doesn't, it's, you're an inclusive community. I get that. But the lack of connectivity, we don't feel like we have a project that has a lack of connectivity. Again, Sky Cottages and Live at Timber Sky are going to be managed by the same people. We are going to have shared amenities between the two of them. Our issue with that, with the stipulation two and these three conditions are, we're trying to keep out cars. That's all we're trying to keep out. It's not fenced. People are welcome. Cars are the problem. So I'm going to walk through, you know, each of them, but again, I just want, as I say everything, the whole community is not fenced. These gates and the suggestion of these three stipulations, again, it's just, it's just to keep out cars. So the first one, removal of gates. We spoke about the gate in the northwest corner. We would like to keep that one. It's important in terms of just traffic and circulation. It's emergency exit only. And we worry if we take that out, you know, someone may turn into it and we may have cut-through traffic that we don't want. The other two gates, again, they're out of visibility. That, one of the problems is we live in a different world. We live in, I live in a cul-de-sac and it's not gated. You know, there's a number of different houses. But I'll tell you, the Amazon trucks, the Uber Eats, kids can't play anymore because of how dependent we are on cars and trucks delivering things. And it's worse in multifamily developments. So there are sidewalks. Again, we've got the Footstool that goes all the way around. There are, there's pedestrian and cycling connectivity and access into our development. If you look here, the gates are not visible. That was intentional. We don't want this to look like a community that's exclusive. We want people to be able to come in. We've got the civic access points. We would like to create a culture where people can walk their dogs, the kids can play, that they can run, that you can let your six-year-old run from your unit to go to the play area and not worry about getting hit by a car. And Amazon trucks and Uber Eats are not as responsible in their cars as we would all like them to be, especially as mothers, right? So that is the reason we would like the gates. Again, going back, if you go back, there are, there is the ability to walk. Oh, you can't go back. Never mind. We don't need to go back. But if you recall, my two little red circles, again, all we want is to keep out cars. Oh, there we go. You can access the community in a number of different ways, through, with your feet and with a bicycle. You can access the community in a number of different ways, through, with your feet and with a bicycle. So that's that one. That's why we would like to keep the gates. Again, we're just trying to keep out cars. As far as vehicular connectivity between Sky Cottages and Live, again, we don't see a reason why you'd need to drive your car. We welcome people. We welcome people. We just don't want people to feel lazy and feel like they have to take their car up. If you want to play pickleball, oh, I forgot to say, they're pickleball. I feel like that's kind of a four-letter word here now, because I do watch the council hearings on pickleball, too. But we do have multiple pickleball courts here. They're planned now. If you come in, you will have notice that you live there, there will be pickleball. But, you know, again, if you're in Sky Cottages, let's say you live in south of Sky Cottages and you're going up to pickleball, I would hope you wouldn't drive your car, but you can't make things up these days. Fact is way more interesting than fiction. People do, they're lazy, they drive their cars. We would like people to walk and/or ride their bike.
So my only concern about that is that we live in the snow.
Yes.
So, you know, it snows, and they want to do something at the other location. Then they have to trudge through the snow. So how, how can you avoid that if there's no vehicular connection?
So there will be, you can do vehicular connectivity by going out onto Woody Mountain. We just don't think the cars need to connect through the developments. So if you see the green line, you can still drive your car and park in front of the clubhouse area if you want to come visit the amenity space and you do want to drive your car. We just don't feel like it needs to come right through, if you look, you know, right by residential units.
Will there be parking in front of the clubhouse?
Through the chair, yes, there's parking in front of the clubhouse. And then again, as far, we have the pedestrian connections, seating area. So we've got hardscape as well as landscaping. Again, snow or, or biking, you can get through. I actually, I love coming here in the winter, and I walk to restaurants. I like to stay downtown and walk to restaurants and all that. As far as the driveway, so to see a driveway through the amenity space, we just really don't think that's a good idea. We really are excited about our amenity package that we have. We don't think adding pavement through our amenity package makes any sense at all. You know, again, with the carbon neutrality and what we're trying to accomplish here, I don't feel as though our primary open space and amenity area is fit for asphalt and vehicles going right through it. So Chair, as you mentioned, you know, the goal of that was to kind of recreate the city block. And what I would submit to you and to staff is that that's not what this is. We've got two residential communities where we're hoping that people can raise their families, have their dogs, do their things, and to be able to walk in the communities. So with that, it is a policy decision. I do feel as though we meet the regional plan with all the other sustainability goals and everything that we have. I'm respectfully requesting approval of this project. We are good with every other stipulation. And, but we respectfully request that stipulation two is deleted. We'll stand for questions if you have any.
Can you describe what these gates at the entry cul-de-sac look like and do? Are they motorized? Are they, yeah?
So Chair, Commissioner, they are automatic. There is a fob entry if you live there. And as you're exiting, they automatically exit as you come up. Again, there are parking spots in front of the clubhouse. The goal is to create a culture that if you have guests, they can park at the clubhouse, and then they can walk in. If you have a delivery from Amazon, if you have an Uber Eats, those all go to the central leasing office at the front, and then you walk and get that from there.
And do these slide left and right, or do they articulate up and down?
Yes, left and right.
I'll say it on the record, Chair, left and right, correct.
Do you foresee that as being an issue in the snow?
We've talked about that, but there, everything is.
Heidi, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we have talked about that. And everything is computerized, right? You monitor everything. So in the times that you would have plows coming through, those are programmed to be open and to stand open so they can finish their work and be closed afterwards. So it's, and it's all pre-programmable, and it's changeable, even via an app in the moment. So that's the plan for that. Thanks.
So on the gates, my assumption was that you could walk around the gates then. But if they slide left and right, how do you walk around them?
The sidewalk is shaped, yeah, in the way that it goes around where they open.
I have a question about the buildings, especially the type-one buildings, I think, the three-story. And I'm just kind of curious about this. So when you look at the floor plan, you see a corridor that runs through. Is that inside like a hotel? Or is that? It's not open to the air like a motel? It's closed.
Chair, correct. It's interior.
Just curious. Anybody else? Go for it. Oh, please go.
I just, I just have some more comments so much than questions, but there may be some questions that come out of it. First of all, I want to say I thought the elevations were great. And I appreciate that it creates sort of a gentle transition from the look of the craftsman in Presidio before it gets to the very modern mountain stuff that's being built over on the west side of the community. So I thought that was really well-done. And as the liaison to the Open Spaces Commission, I'm really glad to see the foots trail and the connectivity. I know that's always something that I'm often asked about when I attend those commission meetings. So good to see there that that's happening. And I assume that, you know, there's still foots trail proposed down further south of that. Does that just come along whenever that last part of the community gets developed? More for Alex.
Sorry, as far as the foots?
The foots, that goes all the way down to like under the 40, basically.
Yes, like as development occurs along that corridor, it'll keep creeping. It does go over, there's an overpass over 40. So I know there have been some technical issues as far as how, that's a future-us problem of how we get that foots across and across the bridge. It may require widening that bridge. But yes, it happens as development occurs.
Okay, great. And then, you know, even though there's an RPO and not very many trees left, it's really good to see a nice, robust landscaping plan for that. I thought that looked really nice. Glad to see Live Communities in this capacity. I do remember them coming to Flagstaff a few years ago, but it was for student housing development, an attempted student housing development. So I'm really happy to see your capacity here on this type of project.
Chair, if I may, that was not them. Different Live.
A different Live.
Different Live.
Thank you.
Yes, that's a student housing developer. And I am, I do do some student housing, so don't hold that against you. But no, this is, they just do market rate. This was not.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And then I had a question. This is where I may have a question. As far as the buildings, I appreciate the building forward and putting the three-story buildings on the perimeter. But would it have created more of a, a more gentle slope of the development, a little less tunnel-y down Woody Mountain if the two-story buildings were put there? Especially when you're going to have two- and three-story buildings to your west. I just wondered if that was ever discussed on where the three stories and the two stories get placed within the site plan?
Chair Commissioner, if I may, they're actually set back 25 feet, and then there are changes of topography. So also to mention, the reason we don't have any connectivity with Block 1, where Roars is going, is because of topography. We just can't. So because of the topography on the site and the amount we set it back, that this actually is the best layout to have, the least impact. Sky Cottages to the south are a single-story. And then you come up here, you've got two- and three-story. And then, again, the same kind of building type. Roars has a bunch of different buildings, similar but different to kind of what this is.
Were the, any of the Presidio people that may have attended your meetings, were they concerned at all about three-story buildings along Woody Mountain?
Chair Commissioner, I, no, they were not. And they also weren't concerned about apartments. They were, they were happy it was market rate, but also happy that there's affordable coming. And you guys have a very mature community compared to other jurisdictions that I work in to understand. No, they were not concerned.
Okay, great. Then my only, my only comment would just be remaining about the gate. And I just feel that it sets a bad precedent, you know? I know there's often been discussions of gated communities. And, you know, frankly, it's happened in my own community. And I just think that if we allow an entry gate, that it starts to become, well, they are a gated community. And why can't this one be a gated community? And setting a bad precedent. So I would hope that at least that amendment gets put in. But thank you.
I was curious, you promoted this being an all-electric development. Do you have any plans or provisions for solar in the development?
Chairman, or Chairperson, Commissioner Harris, no, we do not. It, you know, we do have, we do have some solar in Sky Cottages. The problem is that the technology just hasn't advanced. You know, we feel enough to be helpful. We've looked, we are looking at, if we can, if there are advances, we will add it. We care very much about environment sustainability. We're talking to different solar battery partners. We keep looking at it. We keep interviewing different folks for an alternative. At this point, we just don't feel like the cost-benefit analysis is there. We put in, like I said, an exceptional number of EV charging stations, the commitment to all-electric. We feel like that's a more meaningful contribution at this point than solar. But, gosh, if something comes around and the technology improves, which I'm sure it's going to, we're open to it. But at this point, we prefer to put our commitments to other sustainability.
This one's for Alex. Maybe you better answer to it. Does the building code in this particular development still dictate having penetrations through the roof on opposite sides of the sides that solar would be better suited?
That would be a question for building safety and would probably be a requirement at, when they come in for their building permits. I know, at least, I'm not sure what the requirement is now with multifamily. I know in other projects, they want to show that they're solar-ready and that their roofs are oriented in such a way that they could add panels, that they could support that load. But, yeah, I'm not, I don't want to speak for building safety, so.
So I'm curious about the bike repair facility. I've never heard of that before. I think that's kind of clever. How does that work?
Chair Commissioner, actually, well, yeah, I guess we didn't come, there actually is bike repair at the Uncommon, but that was a by-right project, so you guys didn't see it. They're just, you know, and I don't know exactly with this one, but a typical bike repair just has the tools. It has a bench. It just has availability. And that is, again, getting back to, you know, it being an open community, it would be open to the public. If you see the corner view of our architecture shot, the, oh, back, yeah, nope. Just about there. Oh, there we go. The community is open. If you are, if you are on the foots trail, if you have a problem with your bike, there is a bike repair in there. And there is no gate. There is no fence. There is no anything. You're welcome to come into the community. So it just has the bike tools. Normally, it has a bench, a table, yeah. The tools come out on cables. There's a big bench, and you can come in and repair your bike if you happen to have a problem, flat tire along the way, or, and my husband's a cyclist. I don't really know what you do to repair your bike, but I do know we have all those things in our house, too. So if you ever, ever need help, yeah. So just if you have a bike issue. The Uncommon also, if you're cycling and you go by the Uncommon, they do have bike repair. It's, you know, you do it yourself, but it's open to the public there.
Well, that's great. I love seeing that. I think I could get behind the concept of getting, or leaving the gates in. I like seeing communities making it difficult to drive between communities and making it more encouraging people to walk and ride. I like that. I do understand the point of not making this a gated community, if you will. I'm not sure it has that feel. It'd be hard to know until it's actually built. But I think I could get behind not worrying about that.
Yeah, I want to weigh in on that, too. I was kind of waiting for our discussion. But I guess I'm not in favor of the gates because I've seen that kind of situation, very similar, you know, in other complexes, where you drive in and you see those gates there. It has a particular look that I think is just kind of telegraph. Oh, that, I think it has a particular look that telegraphs that it's closed. And, and just the feeling of it, I'm picturing it in my mind when you come in there and say there's snow on the ground and it's just kind of open. I just, I think it's just a much more attractive look. And it seems like there are other ways to solve the issues of, you know, deliveries and so forth. There might be other ways to deal with that. So I, I'm not, I'm, I mean, I am in favor of removing the gates. As far as the other condition, I think I recall that when, when I was on the commission when Sky Cottages was approved, and as I recall, staff wanted to have an access road to go. When, we were thinking that this property might be some kind of commercial at that time. But, and I was not in favor of an access road then. I like the idea more of the pedestrian access without a road, because you can picture people cutting through. And I think I'm going to stick with that point of view. I don't think it's necessary to have the vehicular access there as long as there's pedestrian access. And, and I also, I can see where the design of putting a road through where your amenities are is kind of not an ideal design solution, so I'm not in favor of that. So the one I am in favor of is removing the gates. So I would go with the city's suggestion of one of those solutions. And I like that idea. Also on the solar, because that was my question, too. I can understand that, you know, in order to keep the units affordable and, you know, in market rate and so forth, to have an extensive solar program is kind of prohibitive at this point. But I very much hope it'll be something that the owners revisit on a regular basis, like on a yearly basis. Especially, it'll be very helpful for your reputation in Flagstaff if you do any other projects. And it's just something that, you know, the technology is changing all the time. And I'm hoping that the buildings are designed in such a way so that they are ready for solar, or the garages, or things like that, to whatever extent possible. I think it's really important in Flagstaff. I can understand why you may not be ready for that now. But I think it's tremendously important for the community to do that. So that's just a comment. Bob?
I wanted to revisit the gates again. Maybe we could go back to the few slides that show exactly where the gates are? Maybe you could tell us about the size? Maybe we could understand that a little more?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, like in our typical community, they're about. Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, it is loud. I don't know the exact size. That's, is our architect on? Would they have that information?
See, what a team effort, Chair Commissioners. The driveways are 26 feet wide. And so, again, it, they go back and forth. There are, there's a very robust pedestrian connectivity that goes around the gates. But they're 26 feet wide, again, just to keep the cars out. Though the goal is you can come into the community, you can park in front of the clubhouse, you can access either via sidewalk, the foots trail down to Sky Cottages, pedestrian connectivity to Sky Cottages to the south, and you can get through the community through our pedestrian connection.
So it's a pair of gates that total 26 feet? So a 13 and a 13-foot or ish?
Yes, two 13-foot gates on either side.
And that's basically the extent of the gates, other than the one requested by ADOT in the corner that not have access?
Correct.
Yeah, I just don't feel that that's prohibitive in setting a precedence as a gated community. It's more just controlled access to me, but, especially since everything else is so open. So, you know, a pair of 13-foot gates on each side does not seem very substantial in the whole scheme of things.
Yeah, does that, so again, yeah, two 13-foot gates with the sidewalks that go around it. And, and I think it does help too with the corner amenity in that civic space, that is all open, not fenced. It really is cars. Yes.
So I'm having a hard time understanding this of the gates and when you talk about Uber Eats or Amazon delivery, they have to come through the gates to get to the clubhouse? Where, where are you suggesting that they go? Or are you looking at the ability to have robots to deliver the food and the packages? I mean, you know, they have those at NAU, takes a long time to get there, but they have them at NAU.
Chair, or council member. I was just joking about the Board of Adjustments, I was calling them Commissioners, Commissioner. And it is, they've got the ADOT, the robots at ASU too, they're very funny. I like to get in their way and watch them kind of freak out. If you see, when you come off of Woody Mountain, there is access into the clubhouse and into that kind of circular roundabout with no gate. The gates are simply on the north and the south to get more into where the residential units actually are. So if you look where the call box is, where that access point, so if you look, if you're coming off Woody Mountain and it's on your west, you go through, there's an entry and an exit. There are two civic spaces on either side of that. So again, we've got the entry point, civic space to the north, civic space to the south, and then a number of parking spots, including the ADA accessible ones, that would have access to the leasing office and clubhouse and mail. So our goal would be, you get an Amazon package, and, and we live in a society where people, and I'm guilty of it too, you, your Amazon package would get delivered to the clubhouse and you would have to fetch it from there. So you do have access to park right up in front of the clubhouse.
Who, who do you think will be renting these units?
I'd say all types, correct? Yeah, Chair Commissioner, all types of people. There'll be young professionals, families, like I said, there's a good mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. I would say there'd be some young families, there'd be single professionals, couples.
Students, NAU students, are you looking at renting to NAU students?
Yeah, Chair Commissioner, this is not, again, since I, sorry, I do work on some student housing projects. This is not the amenity package that is geared towards students. And we did get that question in our neighborhood outreach. The, the amenity packages that are available at the Jack, at the Uncommon, all those places are very different. You've got study rooms, you've got pools and hot tubs, you've got the pool tables and the big-screen TVs and all of that. Those are amenity packages that are more attractive. Gardens and dog parks, a little bit more people our age. So, you know, we can't, we can't prohibit students from coming in, but I would say, again, the amenity packages that are designed for student housing developments are very, very different and more attractive to that, to that demographic of, of renter.
Wait, are you saying students aren't people? I'm sorry, just.
Before we go any further down this rabbit hole, so basically, these are the, these are the options that are in the conditions that staff has prepared. So obviously, the applicant's choice will be one of these. Are we hearing that maybe the gate issue is the, probably what will be your choice to meet the condition?
Chair Commissioner, yes. The, the other two seem like just not feasible and, and just very awkward to implement. Again, though, I, I would say it's, it's not a gated community, nor is it a fenced or exclusive committee, community. It's, and I'll tell you, kids, cars, dogs, I mean, now, now I've got a teenager, believe it or not, Chair, Chairperson Jones, when we met, I had to eat witties, I had to put the cones out because of the trucks, but now even having a, a 16-year-old pulling out, trucks are a menace and Uber drivers and Uber Eats and, so that's, that's, again, I'm repeating myself, but cars out, people in.
Doesn't mean that they won't speed once they get past the gate. But anyway, thank you for answering my question and, and wrapping this up as far as, you know, the choices within the conditions that are offered. Thanks.
I do still have a question on that. So how do you prevent the residents from not giving out the gate code? Isn't there some type of a gate code that they could give out and the people can just bypass taking things to the clubhouse or the leasing office?
Through the Chair Commissioner, it's, it's a key fob, so it's, it's not a code. Could there be violators? Yes, you know, people break the rules all the time, but the, the goal is to the greatest extent possible to, to keep the cars out. Could there be some violations? Yes, but, and, and it's also a key fob, so.
Okay.
So Alex, could we propose then that we advance this to council without the conditions? Is that an option?
Yes, you could, you could modify those conditions and make that suggestion to council.
And Alex, that would be, if we modified those conditions, that would be kind of a separate vote, wouldn't it? Just to say, or, or no, we would?
I think you would make a motion, let's assume, to approve with the conditions modified such, and then you could enter in your modification.
Then we can go. Okay.
Yes.
All right, great. All right, any, if we have no more questions for staff or for the applicant, then we'll just have to discuss among ourselves here.
I, I just want to say that both of you did great presentations, so thank you very much.
And then don't forget, we're going to do a motion on the annexation and a motion on the rezone. The annexation, there's some history to this project and this parcel that, this parcel was part of a plat that came through and the parcel got assigned a new APN number. So the APN number in my staff report is the original APN number. It's now has a new APN number, so I just want, want that on the record to clarify that that's the old APN number. So if you want to use the APN number in your recommendation to council, we should just be clear and I can give you the new, the new official APN number of that parcel.
So it's not the one that's on the agenda?
It is not. It used to be the one that's on the agenda. It has the same address, is a new APN, it's just the last three numbers are now 712.
Okay. So are you saying we should vote on the annexation first?
I would recommend that we make a recommendation for the annexation first because it'll complicate our rezoning if, if that's not.
Absolutely, that makes sense.
Yes.
Pardon me? Yes, I was going to close the public hearing as soon as we had these questions answered, so.
Did we hear from the public at all?
No, I'm going to ask that too. I don't think there are any members from the public, but if there are any members of the public who would like to speak on this issue, please let us know.
I'm not seeing any online.
We all work here, okay. So let's close the public meeting and we can have any other discussion amongst ourselves on this before we make a motion on the annexation. I, I'm probably, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for the annexation, I know. I'm, I'm going to vote if the motion is to, I'm just going to announce as a, as a, that if the motion is to drop all the conditions, I will vote against that, even though I'm in favor of the project, because I would like, you know, to advocate for removing the gates. But I do think it's a, a strong project and it really satisfies a need here. I think it integrates well with your master plan for the whole community and, you know, what's happening there and how it moves across there from east to west. And so, yeah, I'm strongly in favor of the project. So that's my, that, I think that's my main comment on that and love to hear from the rest of the commission on your thoughts.
I, I agree with where you're headed, in favor of the annexation and in favor of leaving the recommendation as is with the conditions that are presented.
Can you flip back in the slides to the page with the conditions?
When we do make that motion, if you include that stipulation for, sorry, I have to do multiple things at the same time. I just want to clarify that by removing the gates, we're specifically talking about removing the gates at the clubhouse, not the required fire emergency access-only gate on the other driveway. Perfect.
Okay, thanks for that. So we're either, either your comments on this or a motion? If anybody has.
This is Commissioner Mandino and I'll make the motion to...
You can read it right off the...
Well, to recommend, to forward the annexation request to the city council with, in accordance with the required findings, with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second it.
And do we need to have that number?
Let me go ahead and state the correct APN. This would be to annex a portion of APN 112-01-712.
Okay, are we legal with that? All right, we have a motion, we need a second.
I seconded it.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Say, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So the annexation recommendation passes and now we're ready for the, the rezoning. And any more discussion or a motion on that?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I would, I move to move in accordance with the findings presented, forward the direct-to-ordinate zoning map amendment request to the city council with a recommendation for approval case PZ2100271-05 without number two, without staff recommendation number two.
I will second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Again, I know I'm going to vote against it, but I'm not against the project. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, so that passes with no, no conditions, no restrictions or no...
Just eliminating number two.
Just eliminating number two. Okay, well, very good. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentations and thanks for all the detail on the project too, as a whole. It was very helpful. And that's, that's all we have except for anything from staff.
Just a heads up, we may not have access to this room at our next, our next meeting because I think they're doing some IT upgrades, which we have proven are needed. So, so I will let you guys know how we're going to handle that meeting, if we'll do it remote or we can hang out in the staff room together, so, to be determined.
I just have one comment. I know sometimes it's a fluid situation, but it was sure nicer when we got our materials prior to the weekend.
Agreed. I hate getting you stuff kind of last minute because I like you to have the time to make sure that you're reviewing it and not like cramming it in, staying up late trying to do it, and also that you would have time if you had questions or wanted more information that you can get in touch with staff. It's, it's our policy to try and get stuff out on Friday, but I also need to make sure that I have all the approvals that I need from staff. And I'd rather have to delay those packages and make sure that, that we're in a good spot than to give you something and then have to take it back or correct it, so.
I think all my time on the commission, this is the first time that it's happened. So, yeah.
And I would imagine with a public hearing, it's also good to give the public more time, but the 40, the 48 hours was met, I realized that.
Yes, we met the legal requirement, but I agree. Not ideal, not what I aim for, hopefully, knock on wood, just a fluke and smooth sailing from here on out.
And then I just had one other question, since I was digging around the development status reports. The last one was in February. Is there another one or is that new GIS page going to sort of take over the written?
We, we are behind on that. We're short on admin right now, so we have a new staff member starting next Monday? No, sorry, 21st, I'm too excited. And I think that'll help us get back on track of getting those out in a timely manner, so.
Okay, thank you, we're adjourned.